... meeting will now come to order. Could I have a roll call?
John Hutzco, Steve Caswell.
Teresa Golden.
Lori G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Bob Wilbuck.
Thank you. If everyone would please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'd like to welcome our new alternate, Teresa Golden. We're putting you into service right away as Mr. O'Brien was not able to be here tonight, so thank you very much for joining us and welcome.
Awesome, welcome, yeah.
Yeah. And we have two upcoming meeting dates, August 4th and August 18th, although after we finish our first item on the agenda, we may circle back and cancel the August 4th meeting because we don't have anything on the agenda right now after we complete that discussion. We have a couple of meeting minutes to approve. Let's see, so May 5th, we had myself, both Johns, Craig, Steve, and Bob sitting, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Teresa will abstain.
Abstain.
Thank you. Okay, and June 2nd, again, it was me, both Johns, Craig, and Steve, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 2nd?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and Bob and Teresa will abstain.
Yes.
Great, and June 16th?
No way, you can't possibly be caught up. You cannot possibly do that.
Well, if you want, we can hold them over, but I'm thinking we'll just go right now.
Okay, you've got it.
All right, so June 16th, again, we had both Johns here, Craig, and Bob with myself, so do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 16th?
So moved.
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and for this, I think we have Steve and Teresa abstaining? Great, thank you. So Pam, we're all caught up?
Wow.
All right, the first item on our agenda is a request to change the public hearing date for the Fakori public hearing. The applicant still needs to circulate for lead agency, and that needs to run for at least 30 days. So it looks like, I'm thinking the first meeting in September is probably the earliest date. Pam, has he, has he, you said he has not yet circulated, right?
No, he said he would be Thursday.
Okay.
So he wouldn't make it for the 4th?
He wouldn't. He, yeah, the circulation needs to run for 30 days in a comment period.
30 days, okay. So you're talking September?
We're talking September 1st or 15th. If he misses this, if we do the 1st, he would have through the end of next week to get the circulation out? Okay. So do I have a motion to move the public hearing for Fakori to the September 1st meeting?
Yes, so moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So to 9-1.
So move that to the 9-1. And then for any members of the public that may have received a notification by mail, did the mailings go out? They did not go out, okay.
No, no mailing.
So anyone who may be watching for that public meeting will repost the corrected date. It'll now, that public hearing will now take place on September 1st. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for the Sibelikos amended site plan on Route 376.
Good evening.
Hello.
Just give us a minute, we'll bring this up.
Okay.
Here are some Google images. Can you talk about the site, just to show?
Oh, okay.
Some of the vegetation that's there. This is the site that we presented last month. Some of the minor changes we made, we actually took some of the solar panels that we were showing along Route 370, I'm sorry, 376. Hey Matt, can you move that up? What we did, we revisited the site. If you remember the last layout, we had them stacked more in a correct-to-linear fashion. What we've done here is we've taken some of them and we've put them on the roof of the building, along the northern side, if you will. The balance of what we would need is shown on this plan. The large rectangle in the rear of the site, in the upper part of the page, that's the actual proposed greenhouse. It's a 70,000 square foot greenhouse, all glass. The rectangle that is below that, between the solar panels and the greenhouse, that is the proposed area for cultivation planting. That's why we're basically saying we'd like to put the solar panels closer to 376, because it allows us to utilize that area for planting. One of the things that has happened in recent is the build, sorry, the lot that's to the right of this page to the south was recently purchased. You can see the lot line actually bisects the proposed greenhouse. That line is going to be abolished as part of this plan, because the building straddles it. We had met with Lori G and Michelle, and I believe others. We went through some items that we wanted to present tonight. Some of the items, we were talking about the amount of power that the solar arrays would provide. We are proposing that these solar arrays will only provide about 86% of the power that's necessary to maintain what's there now, plus the proposed greenhouse. It isn't a power-heavy or a power-intensive use, because of the lighting and some of the various features of the greenhouse. The stormwater on this site will actually be stored underground in the building. It's going to be reused for irrigation for the plants, obviously, inside. That's one of the features of this building. We're not proposing to discharge stormwater anywhere, but...
Is there any treatment to that water?
I'm sorry?
Is there any treatment of that water?
No, I don't think we're treating it, correct? No, it's just, just as it were. We did do a glare study, which, I apologize, we got to you guys late. We hoped to get it to you center.
We got it, though, yeah.
So if I could, we just, Matt, can you go through, flip through some of the?
And Mark, while you bring that up, I guess my first question is, did you elect to install fewer panels? Is that why you're only at 86%? Or do you prefer to put more in? What's?
Well, I don't believe we're going to be able to, that's good, man. I don't believe putting any more panels is going to be, we don't have enough area to really do it, so what we're showing with the rooftop units, as well as the ones along 376, that's about the max we're going to be able to get, so...
Okay.
This is a typical array, if you will, what we're proposing. No way to roll that, can you? There's other photos in there, too, man. But this is a typical array. Try the other side. The, we don't have any real dimensions on it, but it's estimated that the rear, the highest part is about 12 feet, and then the lower part is probably about 5 feet off the ground. We're not proposing to do any pavement. We're going to, it'll be grass under there.
And they're fixed position, they do not pivot?
I don't believe we're going to. Yeah, this is worst case. There is a, we would need less, we may need less solar panels if we track. If we don't track, then this would be our worst case. This is a non-tracking array.
So if you track, does that change the glare calculations?
No. No, because it follows the sun. So the glare study that was done basically was where it would be at, where the array would be pointing during those times of the day.
Okay.
And Mark, is that the optimum place for to get the most light, based off the location?
Yes, sir. That's why we located them there. There is, in that photo I gave you, the image, you can see that's fairly wide open. There is some trees in here, that lot, all this is to be removed, the trees and the buildings that are there, so that they can use it as part of the solar array, as well as a cultivation area. One of the other things that we did, we gave you some photos of what the greenhouse is actually comprised of. We gave it to you in a couple different ways to see different configurations. Some of these are very large. I mean, upwards of five-acre buildings, but in Europe, obviously not here. So what we're trying to show you is what this, what this building, this structure is going to look like.
Now, Mark?
Yes?
Have there been any studies of these arrays in thunderstorms? Because I know Europe is now forgetting some that haven't been asked.
You know, I don't, I don't know that. Have you made a study on, during a thunderstorm?
Yeah, the high winds, it almost looks like, you know, it depends on how well it's built and anchored, whether it would stay in place.
I'll tell you what, there's a, there's a system up in Runback that's on Violet Hill Road. There's a, there's a very similar array on Violet Hill Road, and it's been there for, I want to say, 10, 12 years.
Then I guess it's not too much effect of our waters?
I don't think, I mean, they're pretty, they're pretty sturdy. They're braced and, you know, they're in the ground, so...
The control guys asking me to speak into it.
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, I don't think, I don't really think there'd be an issue with that.
Okay.
One of the things that's critical, there is a timing issue here. This building is manufactured in Europe and would be delivered here. They would try to begin construction on this, this January, if the board sees willing. They need to place an order by September 15th in order to make the deadline, to be able to get this working for this following year. One of the questions I have to ask the board is, does this have to go to the ARB, since it's a proprietary spec and we will not be able to change it in any way?
I think, Michelle, we talked about this, and because of the agricultural overlay, and there's not a requirement to do...
It's also in a residential district.
And it's in a residential district, you do not need to go to the ARB with it.
Other than that, you know, we're happy to answer any questions you might have about where we are right now.
Will there be additional employees as a result of installing this greenhouse that we have to worry about extra parking?
I'm going to defer it. Matt, you want to come on up and speak today? This is Matt Sibelikos. He's going to be heading this up. This is his baby. Yeah, it's, we will have extra employees. We're planning to locate the parking outside over here, in that area. I believe it's between 10 to 15, but some will be, some will be people that are currently working. Could you put the site plan back up?
Is that land-based thing, parking, or is that going to be?
It's in an area that's not paved. We're not going to put a... We're not going to pave it, just, you know, basic stone, stone driveway.
So Mark, you're going to add that to the plan for us?
Yeah.
And I think, Brendan, that was one of your questions as well, is how, what was the access from the site, and if the existing road in, right, was going to be changed?
Yeah, I think the last time you guys were here, you said the, I know there's some structures in the house on the lot that was purchased, and that driveway was going to be taken out of use, but now it looks like it's...
That's still, that's still shown there.
Yeah.
I want to keep the curb cut there, because, because of where they're putting, they're going to be putting in a deer fence, if you will. We showed the deer fence that runs around. It actually starts in the back corner of the building. It comes around the front, and then we'll have a relief apron. It'll go around to the other entrance. It'll come back around and close at the other corner of the greenhouse. But that, we want to leave that curb cut that's there now, just to be able to get equipment in and out.
It won't be a public access?
No, it's, no. And the other roadway is, it's already a DOT-approved entrance, and we are looking to use it.
Just two questions related to that. One is, just site distance? I mean, it's hard for me to tell from the plan how far things are back, but...
Site distance?
Site distance from the driveways.
Oh, it's...
The solar arrays, now that they're located close to the road.
What's the setback from the road?
It's, we're showing 20 feet.
20.
20 feet setback, all right, so that...
The roadway, 376 curves away from you.
Okay.
So your site distance there, it's pretty...
And they're far enough back from the road edge, that wouldn't be a problem. And then the other thing is, I can't tell where the actual 376 DOT highway boundary is, but there's no encroachment of that with the solar array panels. No, okay, they're all...
No, our property line, you can actually see the meets and bounds just below the array. That's obviously in between there is our property line.
Okay.
So we're back by the ways.
But then, on the plan, is there going to be anything that's just showing how, you know, there's going, I mean, is it, there's part of this that's open to the public?
Yes, everything to the north of that.
We just need you to come up a little bit closer to the mic for us.
Everything to the north of the driveway is our...
So that's going to sort of remain as-is, but even like access for, whether it be delivery trucks, or you're going to, you're going to take things out of this greenhouse, like, I don't know where that is all occurring from.
That'll be through that entrance, the main entrance that's...
In the front of the building?
Correct, yep.
Okay, and you're going to update the plan to show that?
Right. Everything will be accessed. You see where the row of solar panels on the building? That area there is where all your deliveries would be. Again, not paved. We're not looking to demarcate it in any way. It's strictly, you know, we don't get, there will not be that many deliveries there, or pickup to do.
Well, all this, all this stuff's going to be harvested and sent somewhere, right?
Yeah.
And what is, what is the little rectangular thing right in the corner, where that corner is? Is that a paved area?
Those are all greenhouses.
Those are all greenhouses?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so there's, so there's going to have to be another road access created to get there?
Well, there's actually access around the back.
Mark, just come, come up towards the microphone.
Sorry. There's going to be access, or there is access around the back silos for, you know, farm, farm equipment, and, so you can actually drive in between the greenhouses if you need to. So you basically can move around it like, you know, like everything around it is pretty much open.
Okay.
Have you thought about the initial impact, maybe sightseers, a lot of traffic, people stopping? That's going to be a massive, unexpectedly large, very unusual-looking structure, and I certainly would want to see it and drive in there and everything. Have you thought anything about that?
We actually have spoke about having sort of an observation area for, for people to actually kind of get an idea of what, what we're doing there.
I mean, I think, I think that's a good idea. Where would that be?
I think we're actually, we're talking about maybe putting a entrance into it that would be segregated from everywhere else? It, it's going to be a very clean area, so, you know, we can't just let people in and out without a...
Well, that's one way.
So you're not anticipating, for instance, like, school groups coming to tour and things like that?
Possibly, but, you know, not, not initially. You know, we need to get through the, the first phase of actually getting going and growing, and before we even consider, you know, showing it to anybody.
And if that were going to happen, though, would you be using an access from 376, or would you be using your main existing customer access?
Just the same, the same driveways that we already, already use.
That's a one-way, so they wouldn't access it from 376.
Well, right now, we access, everybody usually comes in on Hillside Lake and then exits down on 376 here. Hey Matt, can you scroll that down, so it's an X?
What I'm saying, they would use the existing customer accessways. There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be an expectation there'd be a separate driveway installed for like, school buses or something like that.
Is there enough parking for buses if you did expand that way?
If it were, if it were to come to fruition, possibly. I mean, in the end, it, it's one of these, it's probably a startup where you're thinking, yeah, you'd like to invite people if you could, but I mean, the area here, this scale of this map is fairly large, so you have areas here where you can park, you know, pretty much a bus, two buses. You have plenty of room here.
Okay. Mark, I think one of the things we had talked about when we met with you is, again, the town doesn't have a lot of experience yet with the solar arrays, so we thought something in a resolution that might allow for a sign on the road in the event that there's something unexpected happens, so we'd have the ability, you know, within a year or so after you install it, if we needed to, to put some sort of warning sign up on 376. Again, I think we're not expecting that, but we just want to make sure that if, if it's different than what we're thinking it's going to be, that we have the ability to do that.
We'd be willing.
Okay. Okay. Do we have information from you on the manufacture of the solar panels, or are they...
Hi, I'm Doug Hertz, the president of Sunrise Solar.
Hi.
Thank you for having me. So anything you want to ask specifically about the solar, I'm happy to, happy to answer. Right now, we're in a fairly preliminary design phase, so we've discussed a series of manufacturers and different systems. So that isn't exactly nailed down. One of the things we are looking at quite seriously, the solar panels on the roof of the greenhouse. There's a solar manufacturer right up the road in Highland called Prism Solar. They make a unique product. We're talking to them about trying to make a panel this side, because we're constrained by the apertures of this system coming in from Highland. We're seeing, we're talking to them about trying to make a solar panel specifically for those, those greenhouse apertures, and hopefully they'll, they'll be able to do that. The solar panels on the road are going to be a fairly standard solar panel. I brought a, I brought a small sample.
Oh, great, okay.
Just to give you a sense.
Can we pass it down the board? Is that all right?
This is a typical polysilicon, so you see it's a slightly bluish, has a white back sheet, silver frame. They typically, happy to, it's a little heavy. This is also the sign that sits in our window, so... Hence the, hence the crayon marking on it.
Try not to smear it too much.
That's all right. We can redo it. The typical form factor, that's a, that's a one that's for display. Typically, they're about 40 inches wide and about 65 inches high, or the secondary size is about 78 inches high. And that is what we're envisioning for the ground-mounted arrays about...
And is it your company that manufactures those, or is...
We do not manufacture those. With the, those would be, the, the systems we're looking at are from Solar World, which is a US manufacturer. We're looking at Canadian Solar, which is also a North American manufacturer, and we're looking at Trina or one of the Tier 1 manufacturers out of Asia. So I don't think that's been...
And do they all manufacture roughly the same or similar design?
They're almost all identical. It's fairly commoditized at this point. The only thing that's somewhat different would be the panels that we'd be looking to install on the greenhouse. We're looking at a product that actually lets some light pass through for that, so that's, that's a somewhat unique application.
Okay. So with regard to then, the glare analysis that was done, you don't feel the manufacturer has a big factor in how much glare there comes from the panels? I'm talking about for the ones out by the road, not necessarily on the...
Most of the panel, most of the manufacturers use a very, very similarly spec glass, so if you notice on that glass, there's a slight textured surface.
Almost like a pevelling, right?
They're trying to spread that ever so slightly, and it's an, and an anti-reflective coating. Essentially, what they're trying to do is capture as much light as possible, not reflect it. That would be the, that's the, that's the goal. So we did do a glare analysis using the Sandy Laboratories modeling software. So it did show that, you know, there will be some slight glare coming from 45 to 90 degrees off of driver's right as you're, as you're heading north. Coming down south on 376, you're looking at the rear of the panels, so we can't get glare off that. But the glares are from 45 to 90 degrees off axis, so from the FAA's perspective, they'd allow you to land an airplane on 376 with that glare analysis.
Okay.
If they were running parallel to 376, like the original plan was, would it be less glare?
We modeled this from a series of angles, looking, quite frankly, looking, so they're pointed right now at solar south, basically 180 degrees true south. We modeled them 20, up to 25 degrees east of dead south and 25 degrees west, and we modeled them through a series of angles from about 15 degrees tilted up to 45 degrees.
The original plan, I thought, showed parallel to 376, but the actual panels were still facing south?
That, we would want to be facing south, as close to, you know, again, we started a model as far off as we could do without losing a great deal of production. And this was the analysis that came back with the least amount of glare, so we've knocked it down. We'll, you know, the applicant will lose a few percent of output, because we brought this down 25 degrees, whereas optimum is 41 degrees. It's essentially the latitude that one would be at. We've, we've brought it down to 25 to, we found that to be the minimum glare that we could produce, and it's acceptable to the applicant. The, the loss is around 2.1% for doing that.
And so then, based on the analysis you did, even if they elect pivoting solar panels, your analysis, including all 25 degrees plus or minus, kind of from your absolute south?
Yeah.
There, was there more glare with a different orientation?
Yeah, there were more glares in every other. This was the least glare that we could, we could come up with.
So, so in the event that they choose a product that's a pivoting solar panel, what was the worst glare? Do you, do you know?
Well, if you do a tracker, I don't want to shoot myself in the foot, but a tracker has no glare. Tracker always points directly at the sun, so the only point at which you could possibly get glare is where the, if, where the driver intersects the sun path.
Okay.
Because you have a reflector in the sun. So unless you're in between that line, so at, you know, 7 o'clock at night, when the sun is low in the west, whatever, and we can put, we can put stops on that. It's a very expensive option. It's a very expensive option. But that is, you can track that.
I think I'm comfortable with any option, as long as we have the ability to put the, the warning sign up in the event that it's something that causes unexpected glare. Does anybody have concern about that, or do we need to put any restriction in a, in a resolution that would say no pivoting? I don't feel like it's going to be a huge problem, having seen the actual panel now and seeing what it looks like.
Well, this configuration, you've done this in a number of different places.
We've done hundreds and hundreds.
There are, based on this configuration, the road direction, everything like that, do you feel this is no different than the other ones you've done, and you haven't had any issues with those?
We've, so the only issue that one would have is if one were driving at the, at the panels. In other words, if your roadway were basically in the direction of the panels, or, you know, essentially going almost due, if you could drive due north, you would be looking at some glare, but because the drive path, I'm sorry, we're tilted. If the drive path were essentially due east, because the path, this has turned 90 degrees. Yeah, so north, this is the north-south axis, so 376 is, I mean, it's a little bit off of north-south, but it's not that far off of the north-south axis. If there were a road that came at this for, you know, 20 minutes in the evening, that would have glare directly at you. But if you're driving along 376 heading north, you would have to turn your head this way to see a glare, so you couldn't, the passenger could look at a, it's the same way that you can turn your head and look into the sun, but the driver won't.
What about a house, that you look to see if it might impact any of the houses on the opposite side?
There's actually a small, short cul-de-sac on the other side of the street.
Yeah, so the cul-de-sac over here, it's fairly, it starts to right, raise up over there. So the answer is we didn't analyze every house and everything, but there's a fair amount of trees on this side of the road. It's, it begins to get relatively tree around the cul-de-sac.
What about the drivers exiting that road?
So there's almost no solar panels. It is possible for, for a few minute moment, you can get glare. I think we analyzed it for, for a couple of months a year for about a 15 or 20 minute window. You can see some glare. It would be not that different than driving down a highway oriented towards the sun. I mean, it's much better than doing that. You know, it's a fraction of that, but you do have those moments.
On any of your other installations, have you had issues where the town has asked you to move things, change things, do anything?
Not really.
And this is consistent with all your other installations?
Yeah, again.
Have you hugged a road like this in other towns?
The areas that we've tended to build with are more densely populated. So we haven't done this on farm, essentially on ag land. But we have lots of experience with solar panels in every angle and every whatever. And this is, this is relatively straightforward.
Mostly you go on a roof application or?
Most, for, most panels typically go on roofs, whether they're commercial buildings or homes. That's, that's.
Can I just ask if you don't mind, how many acres do you have total?
Yeah, I think it's just over 50.
Yeah, is this all parcels together?
All parcels combined 15.
With the new piece, 15.
With the new piece.
So you have 15 acres, okay. And how many square feet does this solar farm consist of?
Oh, you're probably all sudden done, I think you're around.
You mean just the ones by the road?
Yeah.
I don't remember if we calculated it.
Well, it's roughly 100 by 300.
It's going to be about 60 square feet.
About three quarters of an acre. Half to three quarters?
I don't think it's that much. The building's, I mean, about a square feet, I don't think you're quite close to that. So I doubt.
Well, you got to count the gaps in between the panels. I'm talking the whole extent of it from one end to the other.
You're talking the whole panel or the whole array or?
The array, the whole 10 columns.
Whole farm now.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say it's probably about, yeah, probably about quarter acre, half acre.
A half acre, out of the 15 acres, okay. On the opposite side of that excess road, how come you didn't look at, at that area? I don't have a pointer, but if you go in the excess road to the left of the.
This area?
Nope. Nope, to your left, other way, the other way. In a little bit further past the next, right in there. What's going on in there?
That's the existing business, and we wanted to keep that the way it is.
But what's there? Is there a building there?
Uh, it's a garden.
It's a garden?
Yes.
We just need to capture all the comments, so.
I'm just asking in the 15 acres that they have, if there's some other spot that this works.
Okay. That's not a building though, Mark, that's just an existing plant.
It's just a planting area.
Planting area, okay.
Because you're trying to preserve the area behind this for future planting, is that the idea?
Correct.
Beyond the 100 foot?
The more open space you have, obviously, for the business, it's beneficial. This space next to 376 is not beneficial because of, you know.
Because there's a setback.
Well, there's a setback, but there wouldn't be for an ag. But there, what we're trying to do is utilize the area between solar panels.
But is solar panels an ag use or a different type of use?
I'm sorry?
You say it's an exemption for an ag.
Didn't read it, so it's an ancillary use to the ag use. It's like a supporting.
Not an actual ag use, so I don't know how that plays out.
But it's directly facilitating the business.
So we're going to let homeowners put solar panels in front of their houses?
On roofs?
No, underground.
No, underground.
In an ag overlay?
One of the other.
Do we have a law for it?
No, there's nothing.
I'm just asking, is there another spot that would work?
Well, one of the, one of the primary reasons we were looking for this corner to locate it is our, our power is located coming off of a pole right here. I believe that's the line that shows the existing power. So our power infrastructure is right here.
Okay.
We just, we need to capture you for a minute, so you're welcome to come up, we just need you at the microphone.
Yeah, we're not.
We can't hear you.
They can't plant in that area, that's one of the reasons. Mark, why can't they plant?
Well, because of the, you've got salt there during the winter months. You've got, you've got a lot of shade tree on the other side. So the optimum, the optimum part, a part of the agriculture is that box that we're showing. Obviously, the other box is existing, you know, it's the area that we chose. It just makes sense, again, for the power location and because of the studies that were done, this is one of the better locations.
And those trees don't impact the?
Not the solar panels. No, because it's far enough across the road.
But it would affect the plantings.
Mark, do you need any security, do you need any security from the road to the solar panels?
We are proposing a deer fence around. We're actually proposing a deer fence to start from here.
Here, okay.
All the way around. It'll, it'll, a jut in, create an apron, come around, and it'll come all the way around. And it'll tie into the back of this building again at the corner.
Are you gating entrance then as well?
It's gated in. That's why we did the apron here, so you create gate. And it's seven and a half foot tall, that's basically the square fencing you've seen.
Any other questions on the solar arrays? So Mark, the greenhouse building, you mentioned it's 70,000 square feet, it's covering what, just over an acre?
Correct.
And it's 26 feet to the peak or to the mid-peak?
To the highest point.
To the highest point.
To the highest point.
Peak's 26. I think the eaves are 22. Yeah, I think the eaves are 22.
Okay. And it's in the, in the back corner that's closest to your property line, how far off the property line is the building set right now?
Right now, we're 50 feet off the back corner.
15 or 50?
15.
Five zero?
Five zero.
Yeah, five zero. We've held both the 25, 25 foot side yard and then a 50 foot rear yard.
I'm not, I don't have a good sense of how many of these trees you may need to remove to install the building. Will you have, do you have a sense of how much coverage will be left between you and the house next door?
This house.
It's not going to be gone.
Yeah.
This is the nearest house.
Right.
So you're going to have, I would say, at least on its own key.
Most of a tree cover?
Correct.
I know we talked about not requiring ARB review, but I think it's, because it's such a huge building, I think it's worth it to have at least a public hearing to talk about what the changes will be at the site. This is a little bit, just for the board members, this is a little bit unique because it's in a residential zone in an ag overlay. So technically, there isn't a secret requirement, but we think a public hearing is still probably appropriate just to share what would be going on here. Because it's such a, it's going to be such a dramatic change, I think. And so you have the pictures of the building that you can share at a public hearing. You have, I think if we could have maybe even the solar panel here again, that's our, it's, well, it's valuable because we've, you know, most of us have never seen one or been.
That close.
Seen them, they've been very far away, so. Michelle, I know your voice, is there anything else we would need to cover before we would set a public hearing? Or anything else we need to go over?
I don't think so.
Okay. Brendan, did you have anything else for traffic that we wanted to cover?
I think the only, I know we talked about the panels being set back 20 feet, but now that you bring up the fact of this seven foot fence on wood post, I presume? So I guess if you could just ensure that that's not going to obstruct sight since.
It's wide open.
I have one question. The new parcel that you purchased, has that been incorporated into the ag district at this point?
We just need you to be near the mic, I'm sorry, we can't hear what you're saying.
The paperwork for that's being processed at ag and markets.
Okay. So that would be a requirement of an approval would be that you'd have to have, make sure that you had the whole site in the ag overlay? Brent, I'm sorry, Brendan, I didn't mean to cut you.
That's okay. So just, you know, there's going to be a long fence post line. That's going to be at some offset to the road. You know, just, I mean, you know, if you use the diagram of where a car would sit at the edge of the road and then look out, you know, we just want to make sure again that that's not going to obstruct somebody's sight line. I mean, just to check that.
Okay. Oh, I had one other question, I'm sorry, forgot to ask on the building. Is it a cement slab or is there a basement to this or? Okay.
Cement comes in a bag.
All right, sorry, concrete?
Say it again, I hear you watching.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Will there be a basement to the building or is it built on slab or, okay.
It's slab, I agree. We're going to be putting tanks underneath.
Okay. Michelle, was that?
I mean, the only other question is whether or not the planning board wants to consider any sort of screening or buffering of the panels at this point in time. Because although they are in the ag district and it is allowed, the town is allowed to reasonably suggest things that would soften or buffer views. And if, you know, you do have that purview still. And as long as it doesn't, you know, restrict them from what they're doing.
So could everybody hear Michelle?
Yes.
It was quiet, but we can hear you. I guess my instinct is to, let's hear public comment and then we can, we may need, you know, depending on public comment, we could add screening if necessary. I mean, you're 20 feet off.
Can we ask the guy from Solar what kind of screening he's putting in front of the panels?
Sure.
Ask him.
So what kind of screening?
So that creates some major issues because anything that screens view, screens light. So if you put up.
But you said they were about five feet off the ground, right? So if it's a low cover.
They're at a tilt, so the front, you know, those are, the tables start, the front edge would be about three feet above the ground.
Okay.
And they're tilted to the, you know, they're tilted to the north at 25 degrees. They're four up, I think that gives us about eight and a half feet on the back edge, either seven and a half or eight and a half. We gave you that calculation.
Thought we had 12.
It's lower than, it's lower than two because we've lowered, we've come down because of the glare study, we came down to 25 degrees. I think they're, I think they're, I can, I have the number with me. My offhand recollection is it's eight feet, seven inches. I can verify that. That being said, we would have to, you know, the rule of thumb is for any object that would obstruct light, we have to move back three times that distance. So if you need a seven foot high or eight foot high screen, we have to move back 24 feet.
Yeah, I'm not sure our thought was to try to screen the entire panel, it was maybe more to just break it up so that the visual along the road isn't necessarily just looking at the panels. If there was some small plantings or something up closer to the road, I think we could work with you on distances and things like that.
What's a deer fence going to look like?
It's, it's not very good.
I don't think you'll see it, right? Is it black wire or is it gray?
It's black, it's tough to see. I mean, you're going to see it if you're staring at it, but as you drive by.
It's not going to be screening though. Or like a visual buffer, right. I think that's why Michelle's saying we may want to consider plantings up towards the road or around, you know, along the fence or something like that.
What about screening opposite that street? That you have the potential risk of glare 15 to 20 minutes a day?
I'm sorry, I missed what you'd asked.
What about some screening opposite that street that enters into 376?
Well, there is a proposed, or I'm sorry, there's an existing driveway there right now.
Oh, it's a driveway there?
Yeah.
Should we put something in front of that driveway?
We're going to maintain that driveway, so the driveway will stay.
Okay.
So we're, as I mentioned before, we're going to be putting an apron there with these leaves, so that will remain.
I think it's something we'll come back to. Let's, let's see where the.
I think also at the meeting, they mentioned there were a couple of installations that folks could go look at. And I just wanted to verify with you guys the addresses or the locations. I know one was Violet Hill, and I think that was in Millbrook, is that right?
Right.
And then where was the other one? So if the planning board members wanted to take a field trip and check out some of these.
It's one of Poughkeepsie somewhere, right?
I went up to West Road in Pleasant Valley, but those panels are facing away from the road, so I got a sense of what the backs of them look like, but.
It's pretty hard to find, you know, when, you know, there aren't that many of these around in publicly accessible places. So it's going to, it's, it's hard, and the ones that you'll find were designed for that purpose. So they may be close to what you're looking at, they may not be.
Just before you get to Middletown, if you're headed west, it's, there's, right past.
Mark, come back to the mic for us.
Right past the Orange County Airport, there is a, there is an array that's behind the hill. You don't look, I mean, you don't notice it, but it happened to be, I noticed it yesterday.
So there is one, it's sizable.
Westbound towards Middletown?
Westbound before you get to Middletown, and it's about this size, so.
On 84?
On 84. I don't know what it's for, but it's there.
I did pass one on vacation in Cape Cod, or coming off the highway in Cape Cod. From the highway side, it was not screened at all, but from the local road, they had put fencing, stocker, you know, fencing along one side of it. I don't know how, I couldn't tell you how far the distance was between the fencing and the panel. It looked to me as those panels were actually above the fencing slightly, but I couldn't tell because I was, again, on elevation.
Okay.
Laurie, I think you mentioned about existing vegetation. And I remember seeing out there, there's a pretty large stand of pine trees right in this area, that they should clarify if they're maintaining those or removing those.
That's all.
It's all gone. It's all gone.
All is coming.
All that's gone.
And I, I mean, just looking here with Scott, we were kind of pointing.
That's the house.
Well, all these, all these structures are going to come down, we should just clarify.
We actually already have the demolition permit for the property.
But that area in there, I mean, that would still be close to the power. And I don't know if you looked at, you had, you had them last time kind of grouped in this area, if you just put them on that side of the driveway, get them away from the road.
Yeah, the issue, we looked at that, again, because we can't control trees growing on the neighbor's property, were they to, and right now, there's some significant trees there. So again, we're looking at 100 foot tree, we want to be at 300, you know, 200, 300 feet. And because we can't, you can never control what's on, what's on an adjoining property. You know, the applicant runs the risk of putting in an asset that won't function.
So to that point though, you have, is it possible to extend, you have some shorter ones to the, to the left of the driveway? Is it possible to extend the shorter ones to the left of the driveway to remove the two that are on the right? That would remove the potential glare for the road across the street? Just extend them a little bit?
Laurie, with the existing, with the existing trees that you have there, looking at where the houses are currently located, I don't think.
It's the driveway. He said there would be 15 to 20 minutes during certain times of the year where there'd be glare for somebody trying to pull out of their road. All we're saying is if there's a, I'm not talking about removing anything, I'm saying if you can, if you can extend the shorter ones, you may be able to get rid of the two on the right, and that removes any glare.
We can look at that. We're, we were, we're using essentially building blocks that have to do with the size. They're units of four that we're dealing with typically. You know, so what we're trying to do is, we basically have a line, and we're trying to keep clear of that, you know, of that space. We can certainly look at if there's a way to reconfigure, you know, economically and move, and keep everything up, up above. You know, if you were concerned about that.
Or maybe there's a way to move half of it over so that those two are set a little bit further back from the road or something.
That's possible. That, I think that would probably be. That, I think that would probably be a better option for us, you know, maybe push those back a few more feet, and perhaps provide, and look at providing some screening.
Okay. I don't have any other questions as far as the building or the solar panels go, what about members of the board, any other questions or comments? Scott or Joe, anything else we should go over before we set up a public hearing?
Mark touched on the stormwater, were you planning to do a SWIP for this? I know there's differences in an Ag district and some exemptions.
We were actually trying, we weren't planning on generating any stormwater. It does, it will be collected in sizable tanks underneath the building, so any rooftop runoff is going to be captured and reused, so.
Laurie?
Yes?
Since we're not doing a SECR on this, is it worth circulating any way just to help other departments get familiar with this type of a project, just kind of share the information for, for other areas?
I guess, Michelle, I would defer that to you, we wouldn't normally do that.
Um, the state does not require, the circulation is considered as what you call type two action, so there's no SECR required for the act, except if you're talking about the town departments getting familiar, I don't think it's a bad idea for us to just give them some information, and we can do that amongst ourselves.
Yeah, we can make sure that. Okay, so if there's no other questions, Mark, I'm looking at, let's see, is August 18th doable, or?
That would be, we can do it, we actually need to do it.
Okay, does that give us enough days' notice? I think it does. I'm having trouble counting days in my head right now, you need 25 days' notice, so-- Yeah, I think that, I think August 18th works, if you can get the notices out fairly quickly. What's that?
We already have them typed.
Oh, okay, alright. So do I have a motion to put the Sabelico's amended site plan review of the greenhouse on, for a public hearing on August 18th?
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mark, a couple of tweaks that you'll make for us before-- Great. Thank you again. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a discussion for Brady's power equipment amended site plan on Route 216.
I don't have anything to present, did you have the amended plan?
Um, did you bring it with you to put up on the screen?
No.
Okay. Pam, do we have it here? Bear with us for a moment, we'll see if we have it loaded. Um, the site plan for Brady's to come up, let me go backwards on the agenda, and I apologize, I, on my handwritten notes, I had it listed last, I skipped over the correspondence from Mr. Martin on the Fakori public hearing, he did not circulate, so we need to reset his public hearing, did we do that, or did I--
We did that.
Oh, we did do that, okay.
To September 1st, yeah.
I'm sorry.
September 1st.
Okay.
No circulation, you need 30 days.
I couldn't remember a motion for it.
Yeah, we did all, we did all of that, yeah, we just did all.
Okay, alright, cool then. I didn't have it in my notes correctly, I'm sorry.
Two Johns, right, yeah, two Johns, yeah.
Gotcha, excellent.
That was number one.
I don't know, I thought I was.
Number two. Moving to number three. Do you need more water?
No, good, thank you.
I have it on here, I don't have a way to get it over there.
You have it what?
I have it on, I can pull it up online.
Uh, are we connected online?
No, you have no internet access?
We don't have internet access here.
So you don't have, you don't have a CD or anything with you?
No, it was supposed to have been sent in.
Yeah, but when you, when you come in front of us, you need to make sure you always bring your--
Okay, I wasn't told that.
Okay. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
My name is Brad.
And your last name for a minute?
Stolzfus. You need me to spell it?
I didn't hear what you said.
Stolzfus.
Okay, S-T-O-L-Z-F-U-S, or?
S-T-O-L-T-Z-F-U-S.
T-Z, okay.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, that's Sabelico's.
That was Sabelicos.
There was nothing in the disc that you handed me, so I just-- No disc in there.
Pam, do you have it, Pam? Do you have it? You thought you had it.
Do we have a paper copy of it?
We've seen it before, I thought upon--
Okay, we'll grab a paper copy of it, since it's a discussion, we can, we can work with that. Normally, we, normally we want you to have something you can project up, because if members of the public are either watching or in the audience, we want to make sure that they're able to see the plan as we talk about it. Thanks, Pam. Okay. So the last time we saw this, you had a solar panel running along the side of the property? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe it was, I believe we had it located right next to the building.
Next to the commercial building?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, that didn't give us enough setback. I think you were asking--
For the side yard setback?
10 feet, yeah. At that point, so we moved it a little further back, behind the building, and then moved it back away from the property line.
Okay. So just, come on up for a second, if you don't mind. Is this the correct position for it right now?
Yeah.
Where you have it currently?
Yeah, that's what I've got it here.
Okay, and that meets all setback requirements?
As far as I know, if I remember right, you were asking for an attempt for a setback, or an accessory structure, or something like that.
Okay, and does that keep you in the B1 zone? Because I think your setback's going to be different if we end up encroaching into the R1, right?
Yeah, the parcel is a split zone, there's B1 in front, and R3, or R1 in the back, and the setback is different, and the B side yard setback is 10 feet, and in the R district, it's 25. So I believe the solar array is actually located in the R district, which doesn't allow them the proper setback, from what they're showing, so they would have to move it to 25 feet. The issue with them moving it 25 feet, it's my understanding, is that they have to remove a lot more trees to do that?
Is that correct?
Yeah. And, I don't know, I have an aerial image pulled up here.
Okay.
This is the area we're looking at, right here.
Unlike the previous application, this one is not right up against the road, it's further back on the site, and the parcel that is located immediately adjacent to where the solar arrays are going is actually owned by the Brady's.
By the applicant?
By the applicant.
Okay.
So, it's, it's different in that sense, that it's not as visible yet.
It's actually behind the building.
Yeah, it's behind the building, you could, you could potentially see it driving, you know, across a field, but it's, it's a lot harder to see.
And this one, if I remember correctly, also sits low to the ground, correct?
Yeah, probably about two to three feet off the ground at the front edge, and then the back would be probably eight to 10 feet.
Okay, alright, so no, I guess it is about the same. Go ahead, and, so you're saying--
So this is, yeah, this is the area where we would be, and if we, the farther back we move it, more trees we have to clear out there to eliminate shade.
And the reason that we are currently considering it a structure is we do not, right now, have zoning that permits solar arrays. So, without that, we, in absence of any zoning, we were, we would have to consider it a structure, because it would be defined as a structure, unless, unless we had zoning that otherwise said it was exempt from being considered a structure. So technically, you know, it would be a structure, just as, as we, as we look at any other structure, like a swing set, or anything else that gets put in any yard.
So, Michelle, to move it back, to keep it further away from the road, we encroach into the R1 zone, which, that has a different setback requirement, which kind of further exacerbates the clearing of the trees.
Correct.
Is the, is the applicant's preference to locate this back where you're, where you're currently showing it?
No, they're, they're okay with that location.
Okay, so then in order to meet the R1 setbacks, it's got to be moved back 25 from the side property line. Have you looked at what that does as far as the trees, or are you looking for some sort of variance, or just, I'm not sure where you're going with it?
I would expect we would need to clear probably all the trees in that area, in order to eliminate the shading. To move, if we were to move it back 25 feet from the property line.
Right.
If we keep it close to the property line, we only need to eliminate any trees that are in front of the array. Or directly beside it.
So, while the applicant can do this, it's a hardship in that it's removing a lot of trees, so would we refer you to the zoning board to get a variance to allow you to keep it 10 feet from the property line, even though you're going to be in the R1 zone?
What's the R1?
Uh, residential, one acre residential zoning. The rear of the property, I believe the zoning line, R1, is, runs through the middle of the site.
When I talk to, when I talk to--
I'm sorry, Michelle, I'm having a really hard time hearing you.
My understanding of it was that it was a split, a split zone there, when I, I tried to confirm with the planning office when they pelted up. It may, I mean, it may, you may be right, you may be right.
I'm not seeing a zoning line. Well, that makes it a lot easier if it's all B1, because then you're fine.
That was my understanding.
We had, we thought we saw on the map that you had a split zone, an R1 section towards the rear of your site.
These, on the other side, it's split.
Okay.
Not this, not that one.
Not this piece?
What about your, and the adjacent parcel next to you that you also own is also B1 all the way?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, when I called to ask that question, it was said it was split, so maybe--
Okay. Bear with us another moment, and we're just going to, we'll confirm what the zoning is, and just make sure, if you're, if you're okay with the 10-foot setback with all in B1, then we're fine, otherwise, we need to send you to the zoning board to request a variance.
Okay.
Because I think keeping it closer to the property line, in this case, with common ownership and things like that, probably makes sense, unless anyone on the board disagrees. Bear with us another moment. Does anybody want to see the plan? These are from Pam's file, I want to make sure she gets--
Don't let Pam not have them. She's got to have them.
So, other than, other than confirming the zoning, Brendan, is there anything we need to consider? I think this is far enough back from 216, do you have any concern with traffic, it's not going to change parking, or anything like that?
No.
Joe, anything on your end?
The only, it's not really an engineering thing, but the question about how much power usage, or is this, you're trying to offset the current power usage, you're not really getting more power out of this solar array, right?
Uh, no, we're just trying to offset the current usage, that's correct.
Have you provided those figures to, to the planning office yet? The current usage, and what the, what the solar panels rated for?
I'm not sure if we have, I believe we're covering about 98%.
Okay, we just need that information for our records.
Okay.
Okay. And then we do have a comment from the fire advisory board, they want to make sure that you have a location where you can shut off, to disconnect the service to the panels if they need servicing, or if there's a, if the fire department needs to shut off the power there for some reason, so, they just want to make sure that you have a shut off and that you locate it on the plan, so we can see where the shut off is.
Okay, yeah, that, that's a standard, standard feature, so we'll just need to locate it on the plan.
Yeah, just, just highlight it for us, so we can share that back with the--
Laurie, do you have the plan in front of you, because Scott needs to--
We just sent it back to Pam. Or Scott, who's standing where Pam usually sits. You can ask Joe, he'll, he'll talk to Matt, we'll need to drop for comments. It's all the way back?
There you go.
There we go, excellent.
That makes our life easier.
Okay. Then, I think, did we leave off with Scott and Joe, did you have any comments we need to go over?
No, with stuff we've already talked about.
Michelle, I know you made the comment that this is very different than the previous application, where it's set far back from the road, it meets all the setback requirements, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Because we're treating it as an accessory structure-- Because we're treating it as an accessory structure, do we need to have a public hearing for this or are we able to approve this by motion? Should we do it by resolution? What's the-
I would recommend that you just do it by resolution, I don't think you need to have a public hearing for this.
Okay. So, everyone on the board agree or does anyone have concern?
No.
Because in this particular case, because our code doesn't actually address solar panels at this point and we'll probably do something in the future, we're treating this as an accessory structure. Alright, so what we'll do is we'll schedule you for, we need you to bring in the items that we talked about, so give us the power usage for your, for the panel itself and the current usage at the site. Normally, the way we get that, I think, is you give us the prior year's power usage, usually whoever your current power company is can supply that. And then we just need you to make sure on the plan itself, you're giving us a shut off location.
Okay.
Was there anything else that we needed, you have a couple of comment letters, was there any, sorry Scott?
Now, I know time is of the essence, I thought. Was it for you?
Yeah, we are hoping to install it shortly.
Because we may not have an August 4 meeting?
No, it was going to be August 8, August 4th has nothing on the agenda right now, August 18th though, as a public hearing.
That's another month. So, what are the conditions, the power usage and what else?
Power usage and the shut off locations. And normally, we would do a resolution for a site plan change. Do you want us to make a, do you want us to make a motion tonight to allow-
Well, they can just be conditions.
Yeah. And we could do a formal resolution on the 18th?
Yeah.
Okay.
What was your deadline again for placing an order or meeting the credit?
Well, the issue is that our manufacturer has like a six to eight week lead time. Sometimes more, and so the sooner we can place that order, the more likely it is that we'll get it installed in a timely fashion. And we need the building permit before we can place the order.
But was there some kind of credit deadline or something?
Yeah, there was something about the nicer funding.
You told us something about a 90-day deadline from a filing with the state last time.
Or a grant or something?
Okay, I- Yeah, there is a deadline on the grant too, I'm not exactly sure off the top of my head what that is.
Okay.
But the project has been in development for a while.
Okay. So, Scott, I'm not sure on a, I'm not sure that a motion is-
Yeah, I'm not clear on the deadline.
But I'm not sure that a motion is going to let you issue a building permit if we haven't actually issued a decision yet. I think we have to put this on for decision on the 18th. Alright. So, do I have a motion to, not, actually, do I need a motion or will just-
The information that it gives us, what's going to change our minds?
I don't think anything's going to.
I mean, the reason we're asking for power usage is what?
When we looked at codes of other towns, that was a typical requirement and so we just want to make sure that we understand that we don't have somebody installing something where they're going to be selling back a significant amount of power so they're becoming a small power company versus an ancillary use that supports their existing business.
You can't push- Just for the looks of that. But I understand.
But I can't-
Anything more to ask?
The FAB has comments requesting the location of the shut off on the plan.
Yeah. So, what do you want to do?
So, I would normally schedule this for decision on the 18th. I don't think we need to have a public hearing, so that saves the month of notification, but I think we have to schedule it for decision, we need a resolution for this one.
18th?
If we want to offer a motion, I mean-
I mean, I think, I will tell you this, I will state this, a lot of times in the towns that do have solar, it's typically allowed through a building permit. So, you don't even go in through a site plan approval necessarily. You know, it may depend on the extent of the solar arrays or where they're going, on whether or not they require a site plan. But it isn't unheard of to have it just be a permitted process. I don't know if that helps your decision at all.
But I don't know if that's if it's mounted on the roof. If it's mounted on the roof, then it's just a straight permit process, but the fact that it's a-
Typically, I mean-
Type of a structure added to the site, I get the idea of amending the site.
That's, that's the, might be the difference here, but you do see it in both ways.
Okay. So, we'll schedule this for decision on the 18th and just make sure you give us the additional information that we're requesting tonight. And you also have, Joe, is there anything left in your comment letter that needed to be addressed on the plan? Something about floodplains or wetlands?
The original site plan had some information about wetlands and the buffer from the wetlands. But then I was basically deferring to Michelle's office to see if, you know, if that changed over, the site plan's pretty old, if that should be re-verified. But if you're more than, you know, if you're more than 100 feet from the wetland, it's probably not an issue.
So, is there anything needed on the plan for that, Joe?
I don't know if they should have, maybe they could have a note that says before they install the panels, they'll have somebody qualified look at the wetlands and make sure they're at least 100 feet from the wetland. The other comment was about the setback, basically, and we talked about that and the removal of trees, we discussed that. And then the power usage, so no, nothing, aside from the wetlands.
Okay. So, you just need to show where any wetlands and then the 100-foot setback from the wetlands are with relation to this site? And just make sure that the solar panel is not being located within that 100-foot buffer.
Okay.
Alright, so you'll be on our next meeting, August 18th for decision. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Colley-Caplin lot line realignment on Crossroad.
Good evening, my name is Jamie Keeper from Inside Engineering, serving in landscape architecture, PC. I'm here in behalf of the Colley-Caplin subdivision for Mr. Dean Colley and Mr. Michael Caplin. The properties located, properties for the project are located on Crossroad and Route 52. Two of the existing properties front on Crossroad and the remaining existing four on Route 52. The project consists of realigning several existing lot lines to create five lots from the existing six. Four of the lots will be reduced in size to three acres with the remaining land being conveyed to the property located on 99 Cross Road, which will be 61.5 acres. This project was last before the board about a year and a half ago under a different engineer. We reviewed previous comments from the board and from the consultants and we revised property lines accordingly. We also were in receipt of the comment letters from the consultants for this go-around and have no issue with addressing those comments. So, we're here tonight for review of the subdivision.
Okay. And this was originally, I think, six lots and you're reducing it now to five lots, is that correct? And we used to have two fairly large lots, A and B, and now B is the three acres and A has kind of inherited the rest of the land from-
Yes.
Okay. From lot B and then the other lots are giving back some as well?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. I didn't have any issue except that I noticed that a couple of the lots looked like they had encroachments. Have you looked at the encroachments? And I'm not even sure they were encroachments within this, the boundaries of this application, but it looked like lot B and I'm going to say lot E had encroachments to neighboring parcels.
I believe the lot E, Caplin, he is a- That is actually his lot that he's encroaching on, he owns that property as well.
Okay.
So, I don't necessarily know that that is an issue that we need to deal with unless the board feels that there is one. And then the other lot-
I think it's lot B had an encroachment. Was that lot A, Michelle, I can't remember.
I think it was a driveway, I think, right, that was it.
The Abellino has a driveway that goes over parcel A. But that's, that-
Oh, it was on A?
Coming out to that parcel A, yeah.
I don't think Mr. Colley has an issue with that either. Okay. What are the development plans, you're creating a very large lot here for lot A?
I believe in future, future plans, I believe it is Mr. Colley's intention to eventually put a house in this vicinity. But we don't know when, he's planning on doing this, he doesn't have specific house plans as of yet. He does live on the property now, but as, right now, he's not really sure when that's going to happen, it'll be later on in the future.
And the existing structures on the house, on the property now, would be turned into outbuildings or?
Essentially, yes, there is one house that would become like a caretaker's type facility, just to basically manage the property, because his house would be more up the hill.
But you're not referencing a further subdivision, you'd be working to either have a mother, daughter accommodate the two?
Yes.
Okay. So, no intention to further subdivide right now?
No.
And just, just so you're aware of the code, which you probably are, but just know that any further subdivision per section 163, there's no parcel may be divided more than once as a minor subdivision in a five-year period. And each shall be subject to provisions of 272A, so in other words, you're not really, they wouldn't be able to do any other subdivision of this lot for a period of five years, once the subdivision goes through. And then if, in fact, you end up subdividing and it becomes a sixth lot, then it would be considered a major subdivision. So, even though it would be considered a minor subdivision now, any future subdivision that could create a sixth lot, then push it into a major, which makes you, makes you have to comply with different conditions.
Six or more.
Yeah, six or more, so those are just things that you just need to be aware of and then he needs to know that he can't do any other subdivision of the property for a period of five years, once the subdivision-
Okay, thank you. Brendan, anything with this one?
No comment on that.
Okay. Joe, anything with this one?
The large parcel that's left, we're aware it has some steep slope areas and other sensitive areas. So, we had a comment, because it is a larger subdivision that they're doing now, to just verify the number of lots and that's more like what Michelle was talking about, if it was subdivided in the future. But since you're leaving this one lot, we're just asking you to do the lot count formula.
For that major lot?
Yes.
I believe our office did run it- Do we need to do it or we don't need to do it, I'm sorry?
I guess between Michelle and I, we decided it made sense for them to do it because they're kind of stopping the subdivision at this point in time.
I think, I actually spoke with Tom, just so, just a clarification, and because of the fact that you're stating to us right now that there's no intent to further subdivide it.
Correct.
This is different, the reason we're having this conversation is Beakman Country Club came in with a similar parcel, if you remember correctly.
Right.
And we required them to do seeker and show us a lot count formula.
But at that time, they stated they intended to further subdivide.
Correct, because they intended to further subdivide, because she's given us the information that they do not intend to further subdivide. We can have that as the record and we do not, we'll let our seeker for the subdivision in the future. If we do subdivide, of course, it will be required. And there will be a whole host of agencies that are in this deep land as well, so.
Yes.
But that's the difference between the two, the two applications, in case anyone's interested.
Okay. So, just to clarify, are we saying I don't need to do that?
I think, I think we can, I think we, we sort of discussed that this afternoon, that you don't need to.
Okay. So, I'm not sure if the board has any additional questions. Because this is going from six lots to five, it seems like, and we're not intending to further subdivide lot A. And this falls under the minor subdivision code. It's the board's discretion whether or not we need to hold a public hearing.
Correct.
It seems like we're being a lot less impactful to the neighbors going from six to five and not further subdividing the larger lots. So, if the board agrees, we can move this as well for decision on August 18th?
I have no problem with that.
Any objections? Any concerns? Okay. What we'll do, and again, you may have a few items left in the comment letters, but what we'll do is schedule you for decision on the 18th. You may have some conditions or things that need to be adjusted, but because this is minor, because you're reducing the number of lots, I think we're okay to move forward without a public hearing.
Sounds great, great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Hoplow Gas Station amended site plan on Route 82.
I did bring the thumb drive, but apparently it's not going in.
Okay.
Long story short, I'll get started. Here's her report with the board last month, seeking to provide clarification on the internal layout of the gas station that's currently being constructed at the rear of the parcel.
The building is a great church. It's going to be demolished shortly, system building is a great, for the post building. The applicant, in his latest admission, detailed a 400-square-foot deli prep area with a cold case. Hot storage of food, deli counter, fryer, et cetera. And the issue that we had was the question of parking generation coming into the site, parking for the site, traffic generation to the site. We had a consultant meeting, I believe, two weeks ago, where we sat down, we looked at the site and looked at what was there before. I mean, the applicant can speak to the fact that food was served at the previous gas station. I believe the intent was always to serve food. And I think we're, communication maybe fell apart before. And our original presentation was, I don't believe there's a specific use for deli, it's considered fast food. When I think of fast food, I think of Taco Bell, I think of McDonald's, I think of high volume, high generating traffic to the site. So, we kind of looked at how we derived the parking for the site. And when we originally did the site, it was based upon a convenience store. With the intent to sell some type of food. What we had was eight parking spaces shown. And at that time, we didn't include the parking spaces at the pump. And realizing that majority of the traffic that comes to the site, when they go into the store, they typically park at the pump and walk in. So, looking back on how we derived the parking, we came up with a concept to actually go ahead and count the parking at the pumps. So, if we look at- So if we look at what was suggested to our office was to provide 24 spaces on site.
So that would be treating the deli use as the primary use of the site?
In my understanding, it would be the primary use. I mean, that, I think, is pretty intent. I think that's a very conservative estimate, or actually, not conservative, a very large estimate for a deli use across the whole site. I mean, originally, this was four pumps in the convenience store that required eight. We added 400 square foot deli, and all of a sudden, we're tripling the parking. We will go from eight to 24. So I think it's a fairly large estimate. But we were able to show that with the pump positions counted as spaces, along with a slight modification along the northern side of the site. I think originally, we showed two spaces there, maybe three. We show four ultimately right now. We also showed some stack parking, radiation from the existing gas station sign. We'll have employee parking in the front with signage, and we'll have parking spaces delineated behind them. We also show a parking space in front of the building, each side, and a parking space if required in front of the dumpster. So in total, what we're showing right now is 25 spaces.
That's not what this plan represents, but that's the plan you submitted today. I think this is the old version.
Yeah, don't you, there should be... I thought I had it.
That's the old version.
Okay. I did bring it. But I think...
We appreciate that.
Maybe I had some forethought, but I did email that, this drawing to Pam. Hopefully, guys, it was late this afternoon.
Came forwarded it to us. We saw it. And you should have, I think everybody has it in their package tonight if you want to pull up the revised plan.
And then just one thing. I think your new plan shows a double dumpster, but I got a letter today that Royal will handle dumpster stack, which would afford you an extra parking space if you...
Dump locations on the side of the building. I mean, ultimately, the applicant would prefer a double dumpster. It makes it easier just for handling trash, recyclables, and the delivery or the emptying of the enclosure itself. There is the ability during extreme circumstances where they can actually stack these with smaller units, pick it up, move it, dump it, pick it up, move it, and then restack them. It is an option that is out there.
And you mean stack front to back? It's not that they stack up?
Front to back as opposed to side to side, which would afford them an extra parking space.
Right. And with the double, we actually show a parking space in there. So even if we do stack them, you wouldn't be able to have that parking space, let's say, in the front, but it may make it more convenient to have it on the side. Ultimately, the preference of the applicant is for the double.
Double, front to back or side to side?
Side to side.
Just easier to access for the employees, you mean? And you need the double dumpster probably, especially with the deli use as well, right?
We hope it's a successful business and there's a lot of trash going in there. It means we're making money.
The temporary loading and loading zone that you have marked on the revised plan, is that for gas or is that for deli supplies? Anything?
I think if you flip over the sheet too, you can see the truck turning radius for the fuel delivery truck. That space is not intended to be for the actual fuel delivery. Again, the applicant controls the delivery of gas to the site. And I think in all of our applications we've made with these gas stations, we do off-peak hour deliveries. So the intent is probably for more of a delivery truck associated with the convenience they have an area to back into and...
So you can make it work. You can show parking to accommodate the full deli use. Are you recommending, Brian, that this is what you would, how you would stripe the lot right now? Or are you recommending land banking any of these? What's your request?
I think right now, the applicant would like to go ahead and stripe and build the parking as shown. I think it makes sense as we progress with demolition of the existing building. We're going to have machines on site, so I think as far as mobilization of construction equipment, it makes sense to do it right now.
I guess my only thought is, you know, the stacked parking... Again, I guess it's probably not saving any pavement. I'm sorry, I'm thinking as I'm, that's probably dangerous as I'm trying to talk. But I'm just saying that the stacked parking, you're showing that it works, but I'm wondering if we need stacked parking or if we either give you a, land bank those or do something else there to see whether you actually need it? Because it seems...
It's kind of a tricky situation. The only reason why, just to provide a little clarification. These spots that you have in the front here, I have to pave that regardless, because that's where the actual concrete is for the fuel tanks. And I can't cover that with landscaping or any kind of grass material, because that's where the actual lids are for refueling. So that's going to be paved anyway. If the...
It's paved today, right?
If they want to strike, if you want to not strike behind them, I mean, I guess that could save you. I'm not sure. Again, this is a worst-case scenario, I believe.
Yeah, it's already impervious, so what's the harm in just strapping it?
The only other thought I had is that the sidewalk seems to be aiming everybody towards Route 82, but I think you already have a sidewalk that's coming down to 82. So my thought was to possibly move the sidewalk so it comes out between the loading zone and the... Towards the convenience store, the loading zone and the last spot on the spots that are perpendicular to the convenience store. Just so that you're bringing pedestrians into the store area, because I'm assuming pedestrians aren't headed towards the gas pumps or 82.
What about just the general pedestrian flow through the village, through the hamlet?
Yeah, but you have a sidewalk out there.
But you already have a sidewalk there. It's already there along 376 and along 82. So this sidewalk that's coming in, to me, should be bringing pedestrians over towards the convenience store.
I'm sure the applicant would not oppose filtering more traffic.
Just run the sidewalk behind the employee spots or something like that. Okay.
I mean, that may be a good offset, because you can provide some more landscaping around the side.
Yeah, right. Because, right, it pulls you a little bit away from the edge of property.
Well, again, that's what we get into, off-peak deliveries. Applicant has the ability to control his delivery. So he's going to deliver it off-peak hours. Obviously, he's going to want to maximize his parking spaces during his peak hours of operation. So that's where the offset is.
What I've seen at other places is they'll actually put like orange cones out when they're expecting a delivery, so that nobody parks in this space.
So that the employees will move to another spot.
Right.
Actually, the employees don't have to move. If you look at that truck turning radius...
Yeah, they don't hit that near the road.
And they're not over top of the filling points themselves?
They don't have any to look like.
No, they are?
Yeah, they are.
Seems like it.
There's two sets of fillings. There's the front and the back of the tank, and they hit the back as they pull in through the tanker.
And those front of those things?
Over the front of the tanks.
What time do you normally deliver?
We just see, we can't hear you. Just come on, if you don't mind, thank you.
We usually deliver noon time where there's no peak hour or after 6 o'clock. Either between 12 and 4, or between after 7 o'clock in the night.
Okay.
Do you have an idea when the grill would shut down or the hours of the grill?
The grill will shut down. This is not a full deli. If we work, we usually do breakfast, which is every gas station does, eggs in the morning and lunch. There's no dinner. Basically, every gas station eats fish keel, and I own three of them, has delis and a slicer. And we used to prepare butter roll and bagels and prepared sandwiches at the existing site right now. The only difference, we add in a slicer and a grill.
When do you shut the grill down now? What I'm getting at is when you have the deli open, you probably have...
We shut the grill up.
You might have three employees, but when you're just selling gas, you probably just have one.
No, we have a breakfast and lunch.
Breakfast and lunch.
It's the hours that were provided in the narrative were 6 to 3 P.M.
So at that point, when you only have one employee, I mean, getting to the tanks, if you deliver after those hours, you'll be fine. You own the delivery truck, right?
If I get the parking spot is full, I'll close the deli. I want to see it when time is full. But 90% of the time, the customer comes off the pumps.
Right.
Even myself, when I go to gas stations, I own one, I just park in front of the gas station. Nobody will park a regular parking spot and they go inside. They always park where the pumps are, in front of the gas station. I wasn't aware of, a deli is a fast food definition.
So, Brian, I guess the other comment I had is the space in front of the garbage. It seems like it's in conflict with the first space in front of the store. So to me, if you're already showing, if you're showing 25, you only need 24, I would probably get rid of the space in front of your waste enclosure.
We showed a worst-case scenario. We can obviously get rid of that conflict.
Okay. And you want to stripe all of these right now?
If you guys want to stripe it, we'll stripe it.
My question to you is, if you don't think you're going to need them, we can land bank them. You can stripe them later on.
My feeling, I don't think I need them, but if I need them, it's there.
Okay.
Okay.
Then Scott, is there any... I didn't hear what you said.
They need to know where to park, so if you don't have stripes anywhere, then... And when you say land banking, it's all blacked out.
I get it. I get it. But the two spots right in front of the convenience, I mean, you're going to have cars driving, you know...
We'll stripe it, no problem.
So do you have, Scott, I'm assuming the spots in front of the convenience store only get, just get the front bumper, rear bumper striped?
If anything, I would maybe not stripe those. I would stripe the staff, if anything, if you don't stripe these. If you do want to. Try to discourage that and use that as your bank parking.
I mean, what do you think? You run these gas stations.
I agree with you, but 80% of the time, people...
Want to pull there anyway?
When they pull in front of the...
Anyway.
If they stop, it's not a stop.
So at least if you stripe it, then you have a little bit of control where they're parked.
And that's the reason for me to knock the gas station down.
That's fine.
Put it in the back. Because people do block the gas pumps. They would park in front of the stores.
Okay.
It's a habit.
So stripe them all?
Except for the one in front of the refuse container. So it'll go from 25 to 24.
I prefer not to stripe in front of the store, like you said. But people got to park there anyway, but at least if there's no parking, if there's other parking open.
The comment we got from the F A P was on the exhaust pipe.
The guy parking by right. I could be able to tell him, you know, get out of here, you know, go to somewhere else.
So if we don't, if we don't, people, if they need it, they're going to use it anyway.
They're going to use it anyway.
So we don't encourage it, and we don't encourage it.
At least you've got two defined spots away from the opening.
No, what he's saying is, don't stripe it, but people will use it as it before.
Right, that's what I mean.
But you don't encourage it.
Then you can say, there's two parking spots there, and it leaves the entrance in the middle open.
So is Steve saying something different than what you guys are saying? Because I thought you guys were saying, don't stripe it, because they'll park there anyway.
Yes.
Maybe the thing to do is put a hatching in front of your handicap ramp, that no matter what, nobody parks there.
That's what we do with a lot of gas stations. We put a hatching in for a fire zone. And people, even we'll put a fire zone, and people park.
Do you follow what I'm saying? We'll stripe that such that nobody, parks in front of the door. Because if you don't have any striping, somebody may park right in front of the door.
They're going to do it anyway.
Yeah, but if you stripe it, you know, fire, emergency vehicle, something like that.
So Scott, you're saying...
It'll keep them out of it.
You're saying stripe between these two to ensure that nobody parks there?
Right, no parking. Just stencil it, no parking.
Okay.
Leave the rest and just stencil that area, no parking. All right?
So two spots on either side, but the center, you stencil no parking, so that nobody's blocking the handicap entrance, the ramp entrance into your store.
But stripe the two on the sides, the flanker spaces?
I'm taking not striped.
Oh, yeah. I would say not striped.
Okay.
It's not trying to save money, but...
No, no, right. I mean, I think from a traffic circulation standpoint...
But do we leave them on the plan as unstriped so that, or are you saying remove it and do 22 spots? I'm just, I want to make sure we're clear on what we're saying.
I think we should just have a note that says that in the event they're needed, we'll stripe them, but right now, they're being unstriped.
If needed, we'll stripe them.
But actually, Brendan had a comment about the sidewalk, which you want to clarify. You might have to come over here, Brian, so we can show you.
Well, you can turn the drawing up here. That asphalt sidewalk, is that existing? Like in front of the bank?
This one right here?
Yes, it ends right at the edge of our property.
And it just...
So there's double sidewalks here?
Okay.
There's two sidewalks here, then?
Right.
Okay.
In front of the bank.
Here with me, I'm just making some notes. Any other changes or comments on the plan, Brendan, from a site circulation? Are you comfortable with the truck turns or have you had a chance to look at it?
Oh, yeah. We looked at that previously, so we're comfortable with the truck turns.
Even with the revised parking?
Yeah. The only, I'm still, I understand the spaces in the front, but the spaces over the fill area, that's something that, you want to stripe or not stripe? I mean, I guess from a traffic circulation perspective, again, I mean, I almost think it shouldn't be striped. Because, you know, I guess if all the other spots are filled, it doesn't have to be restricted. You don't have to say you can't park there. But, you know, I mean, if 25 cars are in this facility and having to back out and get around and circulate and get out onto 82, I mean, that's not really what, you know, to me, the less parking spaces, you know, if it has the appearance of being full... Right.
It was going to be labeled employee parking.
Well, the front row will be employee, the back row can be customer.
It just seems like it's just too much on, you know, on this site. Like, and I'm not sure that the need's there for it, you know? I mean, again, I mean, the use of the deli, you know, it falls into, you know, some type of category between fast food and what it is. I mean, I know there's the definition within the code, but, you know, to put all these parking spaces, I just...
That's why we're asking if they're, and I know I'm using the phrase land banked, and it's paved anyway, but that's why we're asking, do we want to stripe all these or just know that we could in the event that there's a parking problem at the site?
It's even there. Like, you can demonstrate that it holds this number of cars, but to actually stripe them, I just don't know if that's... You know, I mean, I wouldn't like the fact of this site being filled with 25 cars, you know? You know, just from a turnover standpoint and getting traffic back out onto 82. And I wouldn't anticipate, you know, the deli use would be more that, people are coming in, buying gas, might come into the convenience store. They're going to grab something. It's not really going to be a destination place for lunch. It's going to be a convenience place for lunch and breakfast.
So my, I think what I would say is I would be fine not doing the front spots right now, if that's a concern. But I think having the employee spots marked is a good idea. I would put them in. And if the three in the front of the employee spots, if you don't do the stacking right away and you just wait to see if there's issues at the site, I'm fine with that. Same with the two in front of the store. So that gives you, essentially, if there is parking issues on the site, it gives you an additional five spots you could install at a future date if you needed them.
If you needed them.
And if you don't need them, you don't need them. Right. Brendan, does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes, definitely makes more sense. You know, not to stripe the one in front of the dumpster or the ones in front of the building or the double rows, because I just think that's problematic too.
So you're reducing parking from 24 spots to 18?
We're only requiring that they install right now 18, the eight at the pumps and the 10 additional. But what would happen is in the event that there's parking issues at the site, the site plan will allow for these additional to be installed without them having to come back to us.
But just, I want to say something to the board. I never saw any of my gas stations, 25 people inside the gas station in one time. And being in business 40 years, I never saw 25 customers in a gas station in 40 years in business.
It's a brand shiny new building, though.
I wish. It's to see 25 people one time parking and they go inside the store. And I never seen it.
I, we don't disagree, but there's the requirement in the code. This way, you're showing you can make it work in the worst-case scenario. But I think we're not saying, we agree with you that we don't expect you to have the worst-case scenario here.
But you know, you realize you don't need 25 people in the store. You need 12 people heading in and 12 people heading out, and that's how you get to the 24.
Or eight people getting gas and 12 people heading in and three employees arriving as three employees are leaving. I mean, you're going to have overlap, so. I mean, you're going to have overlap, so. I think this gives you, it gives you, what did we say? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven? I can't count today. Gives you 10 spots plus the eight, eight at the pumps, and you'd have an additional five you could install if you needed to. I may have miscounted the 10. It might be 11.
And a big thing they didn't have before is, you know, that bypass between the pump and the building. I mean, they never had that. They jammed up the whole site.
Right.
Now that the cars can pass through there, that's going to make a big difference.
That's the purpose for me to make...
Well, that's why I like the striping for the no parking zone right in front of the ramp area to get into the store. I think that's important, Scott. It's, that'll make it a lot better. Even though some people may ignore it, I mean, at least it helps. All right. So Brian, I have removing the space from the plan in front of the refuse containers, marking a no parking zone in the front of the building, not currently installing the two spaces on either side, moving the sidewalk so it points pedestrians towards the convenience store, maybe coming out between the loading zone and the first parking spot there towards the convenience store, and not striping the three spaces in front of the employee parking. So not doing stacked parking right away. And if that allows you to add, now that you're moving the sidewalk, if that allows you to add the landscaping, either back in if you changed it or to put the extra landscaping there, that would be great.
Question for Brendan?
Sure.
Brendan, given the change in use, the site circulation, should the first entrance be a right-only into the site and then the back entrance or that's a dual entrance now on the backside of it?
Right.
Should that change, given, you know, putting more parking lots in there and higher use?
Well, I think we did modify the site access when it was originally in front of the board. Currently, that, the entrance that's closest to 376, that's right now is a full access.
Both ways, yeah.
Both ways. So now it's going to be a right-in, right-out.
It is a right.
Okay, so it's being modified from its current to a right-in, right-out.
Is there a signage?
Yeah, there's a sign, and there's going to be a hashed island and just a hashed island to help direct them that way. We originally were going to have, try to make it a raised island, but the DOT didn't want the raised island there.
Which would be problematic probably for its tanker, too.
Yeah, mountable curve island, but they didn't want it, so.
Then we also have a comment from the fire advisory board regarding the location of the exhaust fan for the grill. I think right now, it's maybe at the side of the building and they want it to be...
We stick it to the roof.
You're going to change, okay. You know that, you're going to change that?
I think we're going to have another plan to that.
Oh, is it in? I'm sorry, I didn't look at the floor plan.
One of the specific notes, I know it came out of the last meetings, we made sure we addressed it.
Okay.
But if we do, if we didn't...
So Scott, was there any other changes or have you guys had a chance to actually review the building as it's currently laid out? Are there any other comments or changes?
The only other change, I think we talked about, the AC units, I think, are in the sewer easement, and we wanted to note that, you know, they're responsible to remove the units if we ever have to.
Oh, okay.
And we may, any kind of capacity, any kind of utility maintenance, whatever needs to be removed is on the owner, it's on the owner's expense or the next owner, previous owner, actually, future owner. It's not on the plan, it's already a plan.
I think Joe commented about the grease reservoir.
Yes, some kind of external grease bin, basically. You see those a lot for, I know you have an undermount sink, but rather than throwing that in the dumpster, there's a typical grease bin that's made for that kind of a disposal.
Well, it's got to be outside. Whatever it is, we put it in.
It's outside. So normally, you have a grease trap buried, but you don't. You're going to put it...
We have a grease trap area right now underneath the three-way sink.
Under the sink, right.
Under the sink. I just want to explain, this deli, we're not really doing cooking, like, deli where they prepare the roast beef and cooking ovens and everything. This is, you know, we buy stuff from Borset, and all they got to cook eggs in the morning and a couple of slicers. Basically, and they wrap the sandwiches and they put it in an open cooler. It's not like the deli, you can think of where they have hot food and stuff like that. We're not equipped in a gas station that way. But if you need a grease trap, we put a grease trap.
Just a container.
It's, I don't think it's a grease trap. I think it's for the, wasn't there a deep fryer in them?
Deep fryer?
Oh, you need a container. No problem.
Okay.
Because there's people come in and actually they pay attention, so they get them whatever, they take the oil and they do something with it, soap, I don't know what they do with it. They would do bio.
Joe, is that something that needs to be shown on the plan or just commenting that they need to have something like that on site?
I think it should be.
Show it on the plan, okay.
We want it in a discreet location.
Okay.
They're fairly small, you know?
Okay.
Don't take up a lot of room. The only other question I had was, the original site plan, I think it was eight or nine sheets, are these meant to be like a supplemental to that set or how are you going to integrate?
Self-conditions, previous setting, apply except for what is shown on this plan.
Or anything that contradicts this will take precedent from the supersets.
And then just for last, it's pretty much the front island will stay the same. That's the one I care about, and this may have to be adjusted for the sidewalk and otherwise, but this is also the same.
It's all going to stay the same. How to shift that sidewalk, I can go back to the way it was previously.
Okay. So we just need you to get us these revisions. I think, Scott, I'm leaning towards doing an amended resolution on the 18th, like we're doing for a couple of the other ones. In the meantime, have you issued or is the building department issuing a temporary CO or do you have to wait until we make it?
No, they're requesting a temporary CO so they can...
And the demo?
Move forward with the demolition. They need that to move forward, the demolition of the old gas station.
Okay.
But that temporary would be excluding the kitchen for the time being until all the parking, everything is...
Until we have a final plan from you, we have a resolution in front of you and